Good evening, it's seven o'clock. Call the board, the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting for Perry Township. In the pledge of leave.
Pledge of leave just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
At this time, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Sorry. Doing the job.
I repeat, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Second that.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
This call through.
Since the last meeting, I helped with the Easter egg hunt, which I'm happy to say that we were able to give a three-month family membership away, thanks to the generosity of the Klefs YMCA in Inglewood. I've met with Trustee Hartshorn, Mr. Hoops, to discuss the roads and cemetery budget. Attended with Ms. Kaler, the OTA webinar, preparing for an audit of ARP expenditures, what to do now. Have completed and submitted the ARP state local fiscal recovery funding project and expenditure annual report prior to the April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two deadline. I have received some correspondence from the IRS Department of Treasury regarding our Form nine forty-one filings. For those of you that aren't aware, Form nine forty-one is how an employer sends employer and employee Medicare, Social Security, as well as federal withholdings to the IRS. We received notice CP one three four B, which is a change to our March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one Form nine forty-one with an adjustment amount due of five thousand, seven hundred, fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. And what this one, what it states is that the February payment was not received, it's still showing payment status is not paid in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred, twenty dollars and twelve cents with a penalty of three hundred, ninety-two dollars and a penny, as well as additional interest of a hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-five cents and a penalty on that of eleven dollars and ninety-four cents. It also has a failure to file penalty of eight hundred, ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents, a failure to pay penalty of two hundred, fifty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, and a failure to make proper tax deposit penalty of four hundred, eleven dollars and sixteen cents with interest charges totaling a hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighteen cents with an amount due by May twelfth of five thousand, seven hundred, fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. I have a call into the IRS with regards to this, we do have to go ahead and pay it, at least for right now, I've requesting an audit of our account because part of the issue with this is, as I said, the nine forty-one is also how Social Security is paid. So that's what's also been submitted as a method for the prior payments to them that were done in error. So I've got to actually get one of them to talk with me, to sit down and try to figure out where our accounts at. Because at the same time I received this notice, I also received notice CP one three four R, which is an adjustment to the June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one filing, showing an adjusted refund of three thousand, four hundred, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, which I'm trying to get clarification if that may have actually been for the payment here that just wasn't paid in a timely manner. But because of the way that all breaks down, they are also charging us against that forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents adjustment amount credited to the next tax return. And then they hit us with another four hundred, thirty-four dollars and ten cent failure to make a proper tax deposit penalty. But what gets even more confusing is then I get this check, which is the total amount of the adjusted refund plus twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents of interest for the seventy-one days that they had the refund. So I've got to get with them to try to figure out what's going on with our account. We've got to make the one payment, even if it balances back out and they end up refunding it to us, we still need to make it. Otherwise, we're going to keep accruing penalties and stuff on it. Plus, I'm hoping at that time, once I finally can get somebody, because you know, it is the IRS, that they can explain to me where we're at on the request for reimbursement for the Social Security was paid in error. So that's all I have on that one. I have also sent an email out to both New Labbin and Brookville requesting the opportunity to sit down and discuss with them needs of the fire levy. What do we really need to have to get put on the ballot to make sure that we keep them whole, but not overburden the township residents?
Than just with you or all of us?
I'm requesting it to be with all of us as a special meeting for that discussion to take place. Because to me, I think it would be a lot easier to do it that way than to try to play the messenger and and all of that, just everybody come together at one time. Plus, with it being a special meeting, it would be open to the public. Maybe they, if they have any questions or concerns, they can come in and we can help kind of get it answered as a group.
I agree.
Yeah, the problem we've had in the past is that they won't tell us what it takes to make them whole.
Right.
They just expect us to pay a fair price, which we haven't paid.
Right. But they're going to have to help us a little bit more on that if they want it to be, want us to even have a chance of getting anything passed.
I think there was some traffic went over the last four months where I saw Sonya at the OPWC. And then I think she said something out to you and everybody else saying that I said, I made a comment of one point five. Being easier to digest because they weren't giving us anything to hone in on the number.
Right.
And after she thought about it for a while, she said, probably closer to two, I think is what she put in.
I think that's what it said, but I figure if we can all be together with that discussion, it kind of gets everybody on the same page.
And once we start talking about it, we're going to continue to talk about it until we get it done. We're coming up on the deadline to get that submitted. And we don't have the luxury of just being able to take it at a slower pace.
Right.
Totally with two different jurisdictions, are we going to do that separately or we're going to have them both here together?
Have them both here together because what happens is our levy funds come in as one amount and then it gets split fifty-fifty, so.
They need to go.
They need, they need to all agree, yeah. And then I also have two resolutions tonight that I need to present to the board. Their review and potential approval. One is Resolution two thousand and twenty-sixteen to establish account code two zero eight one, two one zero, three one one dash zero zero, zero, zero in Fund two zero eight one for the purpose of legal expenses to be followed by Resolution two thousand and twenty seventeen to increase funds and appropriations of two thousand dollars to account code two zero eight one, two one zero, three one one, dash zero zero, zero, zero.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution two thousand and twenty-sixteen, create an account code two zero eight one dash two one zero dash three one one dash zero zero, zero, zero for the purpose of legal expenses.
I'll second that.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
And I'll make a second Resolution two thousand and twenty seventeen to increase the funds and appropriations of two thousand dollars to account code two zero eight one dash two one zero dash three one one dash zero zero, zero, zero.
I second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Okay, and then just the final thing I have, currently I only have one upcoming event on the schedule and that is for May twenty-seventh. I will be attending a OTA webinar, Demystifying Grant Seeking Tools and Tips for Success. That's all I have.
For cremation burials this past month, ever saw, pure mind, Pleasant Hill. Completed our spring headstone foundation for, we poured six yards of concrete. We brought in five thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars. And all of our foundation bills have been sent out and they were waiting checks. We've received a few, just still waiting on most of them. We're going to start mowing our old cemeteries, our cemeteries you don't see off of Clayton back on those before Memorial Day. We're going to spray around the headstones as well so we can see them. Our tree was successfully brought down, they had a quote for twenty-eight hundred dollars and things went very well and we were only charged twenty-two hundred. My instincts estimating, Ben and Screed did a great job, they were very quick and efficient. So thank you, Ben. Our equipment, the road mower is currently down with the broke PTO shaft coupler. I wrote this, it was down, but this afternoon it was. We get, we get it back in the morning, so we'll get back to road mowing as well. At the building, we installed catch basin for our floor drains that we didn't have before. We've been working on our office remodel. We do want to do, all I was asking, what do you want to do with our hay field in the back? Do we want to continue raking that or making hay off that, or do we want to just?
We have a contract on that charity, do you know? So no.
Nothing that I am aware of.
Because I thought we had like seven-year contract on them.
I don't have, know of a contract, I know that there had been at least a verbal agreement, I'm not sure who that even is with. I don't have anything, any records that I could find that specify where we've received any payment for like lot rent or anything like that.
Nick, you know, Nick and John Wright have been mowing it, he contacted me the other day, Monday, or Friday, I guess. And he's interested in still cutting and raking it, but he don't really want it. He's just doing it because he's passing by, going through there. So I don't know if we want to continue to do that, if we want to mow ourselves, we're going to let it grow up. I mean, I don't know really what we wanted to do there, but it's kind of getting pressing, so.
If, if you have the time and resources to mow it, we don't need a resident mowing that for us, even though the kindnesses are hard, appreciate it.
Well, they're, well, they're mowing it, but they're bailing it.
Right, but they don't, but they don't want it, so they're bailing it, they're cutting and bailing it, but then they're not keeping it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll take it all. He doesn't want to, he don't want to rent it per se, he just, he'll do it, but he don't.
It's just, it's just grassy, so they just come in and, and do it.
Last year, they got seven bales off of it.
Well, if it's, if everything's still on good standing, then it can persist.
I don't have an issue.
I had the feeling the way that you said it, that that they, that they were just doing it to do it.
Yeah, well, that's, they don't, you don't want to rent it if we were to try to rent it out.
Because there's not that much there.
This time, they said, but I'm passing through, I can do it. That way you don't have to, you know, rest with it. Better than just mowing it and mowing it outright, I think.
Then what happens to it? The hay?
He takes it.
Yeah, he takes it.
Okay. That's, that's a payment. That's, that's the payment, I guess.
He uses his own fuel and everything else, I mean, he brings his tractors and his baler and everything else, so. And like Caleb said, there's not that many bales off of it, so.
So we're good, I'll, I'll let him know. Okay, roads, we started mowing our cemetery properties, administration buildings. We also started our road mowing. We've been cutting trees back on site distance issues and our school bus drivers. We're also getting started spraying our, our road signs and our guard around the roads. I'm working on getting prices for, to rent a durper patcher and a crack sealer. I'm also working on getting quantity in areas to cut out and replace asphalt on St. Croix. I talked with Melinda today from Kramer and Kramer about our grant with Providence Road. They should know something this Thursday. Other, we are not doing anything there, which would be good if we get it off. Update on Wolf Creek watershed, TNT Environmental has completed the project, they've moved on now. They, they did a really great job, they have removed over a hundred loads of debris from Wolf Creek from the tornado damage. We walked in there, we were in there four or five times. Met with Vic, met with both. They had got from TNT and then we walked through all of it. I mean, they were, they went over and above, in my opinion. They really, they did a great job there, and it looks really good, too. That's, that's really it from our report, just asking for permission for the install and many split and price for that, for our office.
Right. Our second tranche now.
No, we won't get it until like August or September.
So this, this was actually set up for the second tranche, wasn't it?
Well, that's what was going to be discussed was part of the second.
Right, so. Ask Mr. Brackman if this estimate that he provided can be good through the end of September. And when we get the second tranche, then we start figuring out how we're going to chop up those ARPA funds. We'll make a decision quickly and we'll get back to him as quickly as we can. It's not a matter of if we're going to do it or not, it's a matter of we need the funds to be able to decide that we're going to do it.
Right, right.
Are you talking on the power box that you showed me?
No.
That's, this is the heating and air.
For the, our office remodel.
Right, but not the power, but over then, okay.
I think that was something else that we were going to discuss with the ARPA funds, so. Also, like to give permission to appropriate money in the budget to purchase a Bobcat skiver. Got a quote of eight, it's eighty-three, eight, but that was still like two months ago. Just a little bit, and he told me eighty-five would, would cover the cost, but that also comes with a heavy-duty bucket, root grapple bucket, a heavy-duty force and with machines, a two-year warranty, there's a packet there with it, all the information. This piece of equipment would be a big upgrade to Perry Township, we could utilize it and everything we do with the track system, we can use it in cemeteries as well, it's also on the road. And in our, in our area, we have ample number of attachments to grade at least value in our area. We could have dozens of attachments at Brookville Rental. I've got a Troy, I've got a Dayton, they're all, you know, they're kind of a specialized, they become now, I mean, it used to be where they were universal to hook up for everything, now they have a box, a brain box to them. And I think you can get some different leads for them. Or just going to rent something if we needed it. Just have a lot of availability to, to a Bobcat, that's, that's where I picked the Bobcat. If we needed anything in need or a pinch for rentals right there as well, I mean, just close to home.
So this, you, you came up with this, defining this need through the assessment of the current road department assets that we have, what we're responsible for and what we're not completely able to do because we're lacking that equipment.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
I, I don't want people to think that you just said, hey, I want to buy a skid loader.
We, we could use it on just tons of different aspects, as far as just cleaning up our roadways. We do have a backhoe, but they're trying to get a twelve-foot bucket and somewhere to grade out, straighten out ditches compared to.
And I, I want residents to understand that this is something that went through from when you were hired. We tasked you to assess the inventory, the capabilities and identify where we're lacking.
Yeah.
And this is one of the areas that was identified, major areas was identified that we were lacking in.
So we have a John Deere tractor that you can, you can lift up five sheets of plywood and that's all. And if we start getting into a durper patcher and crack sealing, like those come in skids on semi, we can't unload them, there's three hundred boxes we have to do by hand. There's just, there's no benefit with the little tractor we have, that's a little grayer box on it, but it's four foot wide, I mean, and doesn't do a good job, the backhoe has its place and time. If you, if you start looking at anybody that's doing a bunch of asphalt work or any excavation work, it's a good loader and a mini is where, where they're at, I mean, it's a.
So I remember this conversation.
Yep.
Have you reached out to K and X or Boons and found out like if we were to sell the tractor to them or?
Yes, I contacted, went through Perry, went through Coney as well, Perry's worked for Bobcat. He, he deals with wholesalers, equipment wholesalers. I wrote down exact price, what he, what he was offering, but I, I think we could put it on Gov deals and sell it for more than what he was asking. Koenig was interested as long as we were changing equipment with them.
Right.
So.
Right.
And you're talking the little John Deere tractor?
It's a two thousand and three, it's got little hours on it, just doesn't fit our needs here. I mean, come with the Bushog, that would be the only thing we could use a Bushog, but we can use a roadside mower and we can use our mower when we start mowing these properties that have higher grass and all that, so.
Okay, well, on top of that, with a skid loader, we, we can get a Bushog attachment.
So.
Clean all our stuff up with that. Give us a baseline, just get back, send an email to us. Let us know what the assessed baseline was. And if we were to put it on Gov deals, is, is that starting price? Then where it goes from there? I can, but this is another thing, this was planned to come out of the, was it the roads and bridge?
Road and bridge, I mean, we have a quite a big rollover from last year.
So we have the space, budget-wise, we need it. And we're going to get rid of something that we don't need.
Correct.
It's very inefficient. And that'll likely offset more than half of this price.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Plus, I mean, just it, it could save a bunch of time with just a limited amount of guys we have with, you know, with two full-time, one part-time as far as putting asphalt in the ground.
Right.
We can send a guy to go get asphalt while we're grinding and milling them out and cleaning them up all in the same step and waiting on asphalt to come back.
So let me ask you a question. If we were to put the tractor on Gov deals before we bought this, would that put you out? Is there anything that it does right now that you couldn't live without?
We just have to break our backs for a little while, but we can do it.
No, I'm, I'm trying to assess the priority on the timeline, so I don't have a problem and I'll let the other trustees speak for themselves because I don't speak for anyone but myself. I don't have a problem with getting rid of it before we buy the skid loader.
Right.
If it's not going to put you out. If it still has some use, albeit under capable.
Right, right.
Then getting rid of it after and then backfilling those funds with anything we would get from like a Gov, Gov deals. I'm fine with that, too.
The, the biggest concern is if, if I called Perry right now, we couldn't get this loader until August.
Right.
So we would have some time there where it's.
So I'd like to hear from the other trustees what their thoughts are on one on the skid loader and two on getting rid of John.
Can you go ahead and put the order in? And then wait till July to put this one on?
Yeah, we can, we can do that, I can get a baseline as far as comparisons to where it's at and see where we're going to start at. That way everyone knows kind of what we're trying to get out of it. I don't know, I just want to set a number on what you're trying to get out of it, but.
I would use your expertise on what it's worth over making an assessment there.
That's why I was saying establish a baseline with, with the minimum, what like you said, Gov deals, we'd likely get more than what we would get trading it in and with Boons, they want the business.
Right.
And that sweetens what they give the trade-in on, right?
Right.
So our, our fallback position is that we can always go to Boons or K and X. And just get, and sell it to them and be done with it. So, yeah, I, I think that makes sense, if, if the other trustees are fine with moving forward, skid loader, we have it in the budget, we need it.
One thing on that is we need to check and make sure that we're staying in compliance with the procurement guidelines because of the amount that it is. And I believe it requires, we have to have more than one quote.
Yeah, we have to have at least three bids according to the FAR. And then we can assess them and it, it doesn't require a formal review. We just have to assess the bids and figure out what makes the most sense for the township.
Right.
Whether it's timing, whether, you know, if one place would have to order it and it would take two months to get here, one's got it on the lot, but it's five thousand more, two thousand more.
Right.
We'd have to assess the need, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that said, thank you for that, I often forget about the FAR here at, at the township level. If you could get at least two more quotes for the exact same build out and bring it back to us, I think that we're, we're in a place where we could turn on that quickly and get that executed.
As far as selling the tractor, it's whether we get the money before or after.
It's just a matter of putting them out, I don't, I don't want them to sell it and then have to.
Right, yeah, I don't care if we, if we sit on it until we don't need it.
Five pieces of plywood are heavy. Well, still, but, you know.
I will, I'll get those, I'll, I'll email everybody, the, the three comparisons. Just judging from my experience at, at the state, it was, Bobcat was quite, quite a bit lower. Millions of dollars of equipment with them, so. I will, I'll work on that and get it back to you.
Okay, did you have anything else?
That's it.
I did have one point of clarification, a couple of months ago. I had said when we were talking about the future planning of the township, that Trustee Mears works with the police. I work with the roads and cemeteries, but for the sake of cemetery planning, I asked Trustee Music to take that. Might have created a little confusion because we can't have, it's inefficient to have Caleb answering to two people.
Sure.
So for the sake of the cemetery planning, that's still you. But if there's something that you need to run through Caleb, I would just ask you to through me, that way he's only got one person, he doesn't have to worry about, you said one thing, I said another thing and then he's stuck in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That way we can true it out.
I feel like we've, we'll keep it in fashion. I feel like we've done that, have we? Well, maybe there has been some confusion on church.
And, and I'm, I'm not pointing fingers or saying anything like that truly bad has happened. What I'm saying is, is that that's an unfair position for Caleb then. And I think we can be more efficient with how we deal with it.
I agree.
That's all, so.
Another one for our, our archway. For some of you guys to think about what, what we kind of want to put back, what we want to, kind of what we want it to look like there. And then I also have a, some other ideas about putting some niches in over there where the dirt's at, maybe there or where the building's at. We can build pillars to where we, we actually slide the cremations in, it's a sealed unit. I talked to Kevin Rogers about it a little bit. He's got a bunch of information, there's a bunch of information on the internet about him. Takes up a little footprint. You know, and we can get quite a bit in different areas.
And I've been kind of looking at cemeteries too, like up there, what you call it on forty, what is it? Thank you, they have, you know, just a picture of one and nice poles or things like that, you know, and I know that you did talk to a couple of people about maybe making an archway, metal archway or something like that.
But maintenance, something that still looks good and.
What do you, something up there, something, something there that says.
And to be fair, we, we did have several conversations where we said that we would put the topic out to the residents and see what ideas they had, whether it's a construction of some type, a metal sign, something. And try to work through that, and I think Trustee Music said he was willing to work on a committee from that regard, so. Now that, now that it's gone, the archway's gone. Would you be able to kick that off and start, we'll put, if you could post something on the township Facebook saying that, that, you know, give it like a three-week leadway or something like that and just coordinate that and then bring it back next month.
Yes.
And see where, I don't expect it to be done by next month, but just the trajectory and the thrust that you're heading.
Yep.
To be able to get that dealt with this, we definitely want to do something before the ground freezes again.
Yep.
You know, that whole road starts to look awful lot of the same with all the twists and turns and everything else, so.
And can I ask, can you possibly check Providence down in the dip? Because the road's getting washed away, I know the last time they put black gravel on the side, whatever those are called.
Yeah, that's all. I know, I have a ton of work to be there, I didn't want to put a bunch of effort into that road and then we're going to be tearing it all right back up, so. Once Thursday happens, whether, yeah, your name.
Okay. It's getting pretty hairy, if someone passes you, you're going off.
We shoveled that whole line full again, dug all, you try to get some ditches where it flowed down there and it just, is that a passing zone?
I'm talking another car coming towards you.
We can't do that anymore. Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Just, you know, because I, I saw some big ruts.
All right, good. Push port. We had our Easter egg hunt on April sixteenth, being a preacher buddy who helped out with that, that was a very huge success. I want to say we had just over ten thousand eggs, if not more. With everybody's help, we had a very good control where we had everybody laid out for different age groups and I would say we cleared every egg in seven to ten minutes. If that, it was a very, very great controlled chaos, but it was a very good opportunity we got to do with the township and all this, all the citizens, so it was a very, very well received from everybody in the township and we appreciate everybody's help with that. We also hired Jamie Grill, she is a part-time assistant for the property custodian and the administrative assistant. She'll be working two to three, two to three days a week. Her responsibilities will be keeping track of all the evidence that we have in our annex building and within the actual township, taking care of all the paperwork for the courts as far as.
Taking care of all the paperwork for the courts as far as documentation and destructions. Um, anything else that we need to kinda help things go to court that frees an officer to stay in the township through the week, that's what her responsibility is gonna be. Um, her effective date was on May fourth, um and her starting pay will be fourteen dollars an hour.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, I need a motion for that one.
I'll make a motion to hire Jamie Grill as the property custodian and admin assistant from the police department effective May fourth, twenty twenty two at fourteen dollars an hour.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
And then I also have another motion for Corey Walters, who was an auxiliary officer, so he was not an actually paid employee, he was just one of the officers that would help on different occasions. Um, but he submitted his resignation, uh his resignation was effective on uh March twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. April, I'm sorry. Looking at too many things on there.
April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn? Trustee Music?
Yes.
You're still working on the budget for the additional levy, um so we're working on getting all those together. Um, we're also still working on our stats for April. Um, we've had a few people reach out asking for additional information, so we're trying to get all that. Gathered at once, that way we can make that a uh a pattern to continue to do, um so we're hoping to have those out in the next week or so. Um, but we are still actually working on the app on the April statistics for that as well. Um, I was contacted last week that a chief was cleared by BCI. Um, in his shooting that occurred in Inglewood in January. Um, the case has now been handed over to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office who is handling the internal investigation for us. Um, to make sure that everything was followed within our procedures. Um, as I know more, I'll continue to let you guys know where things stand on that one. Um, some of our most recent cases, um the burglary burglary suspect that was on Diamond Mill back in October. Um, he received eleven years in a mental hospital. Um, he was shown to be, you know, insane in the reason for it. Um, the Taylor Walter homicide has been rescheduled and pushed back, so we're still waiting to figure out when that'll be. Um, and then Detective Waymire had another case that cleared, um where the guy was sentenced to twelve years um in prison. He has to do five years post release probation afterwards and he has to sign as a, I'm sorry, register as a tier three sex offender for the rest of his life, so. We're still getting close, cases closed, but we're just, we're moving through them as we can, so. That's all I have for the police department.
All right, I did have one question for you.
Yes.
Um, and I brought this up probably two years ago when I first became a trustee. Uh, as you drive around the township, you'll see a lot of little signs that say neighborhood watch. And I don't believe we've had an active neighborhood watch in this township. I I I have yet to find someone who can tell me when the last time that there actually was an active neighborhood watch. I'd like to find out, one, what the police department's appetite is for that kind of a program. I will put something out on social media asking just a poll of residents to say yea or nay, whether there's an interest in neighborhood watch programs. And if it turns out that. Either the police have the resources and time to do it and the residents don't see it as a pressing need, then we need to take those signs down. I don't want people thinking that there's neighborhood watch when there really isn't, so it's been a hanging chat for at least a couple of years now. We're just gonna try to get it taken care of once and for all, either we're doing it or not.
Easter Bunny.
Yes.
Uh, I know he was warming.
He was warm.
Fantastic job. He knows me.
Zoning Department.
Okay, um, I wanna thank Caleb with the Rogue Crew. I've noticed if anybody's dropped their trash payments off. Uh, there's a new trash box out there and everything's nice and dry, so thank you guys, did a great job. Also wanted to let uh everyone know that the office will be closed next week, May sixteenth through the twentieth, cause I'm taking a vacation. On April twenty second, which charity has already said that we did a, the AR. P A. Arpa, thank you. Train, I can't even read this. I sent out twelve hundred and ninety-seven trash bills and they were sent out on March twenty eighth. And as of today, we've received a thousand twenty-seven payments, so they are, they've been coming in. Things are moving forward on the properties in Paramount for demolition. Trustee Mears and I met over Zoom with Land Bank, Suzie Crable and two other of her associates. And they came up with a plan to have their real estate council Coolidge wall law. To partner with Perry Township to handle the legal notices to the owners and lien holders of properties that have been abandoned. Uh, where the owners have died or can't find any family. They have the, they have the ability to locate family members, lien holders and that type of thing. And they specialize in this type of law as far as. Demolition or nuisance abatements, that type of thing. They have sent a draft of a. Engagement letter, which basically says what they do and can do for us and. They. Land Banks is, will foot whatever bill that Coolidge has for the township, they have funds set aside for that. So it will not cost the township any money for the assistance of this law firm. Uh, so they will take care, instead of me sending out the legal notices and. All the postage that the township was having to pay and all that, they're going to take care of all that because they know the law, they know, you know, the insides and outs, so. That's something that we're looking into. I have three pending permits. And I have issued a swimming pool. A shed and a garage permit since our last meeting. And I'd like to remind everyone in the township. If you're going to build, put up a shed or whatever, please notify me, notify the office so that I can. Let you know if you actually need a permit or not. It is helpful, even if it's an agriculture building, if you would just let me know. And um that way, when people are come calling saying, do you know that there's a building going up, whatever, I don't have to say, well, no, you know. So it would, that would be helpful, if, you know. If it's agriculture, then you're not gonna be charged a fee. It's basically just doing the paperwork, it's here in the office, anybody calls, I can say, hey, we got it, you know, it's fine.
We need to make sure that that's codified. Alyssa, we're gonna be working with the uh the zoning commission.
Yes.
We need to reinvigorate. That and reform.
Yes.
That's definitely something that needs to be codified because it was never in there before. And people knew, some people didn't, and people that knew still expected other people to submit for permits.
Right.
So we need to just make sure it's level, it's part of the code and it's for everybody, right?
Right. Now that the weather's opening up, I'm gonna remind everyone to please uh check your properties. I'm getting a lot of complaints on high grass, trash, debris, that type of stuff. So letters will be going out and. If the properties aren't cleaned up or mowed or whatever, then there will be some nuisance abatement hearings scheduled. So, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Last month, I I've continued to work with the the township uh social media and uh computer systems. Keeping them up and running and in good order. Continued weekly driving inspections of township roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. I attended the OPWC District Four meeting. They're ramping up for the next year's review of issue two submissions. So uh I'm currently sitting on that board and I am part of the evaluation that took place. Last year. And I will say that this year, when Kramer Kramer reaches out and says, hey, here's all this paperwork, what do you think? Got a much better footing on actually forming an opinion on their submission. Just because before when they did it, I don't think that any of us really knew what went into the scoring or evaluation and. We actually stepped down to one project instead of two, which last year, I honestly don't think it would have helped us. Because a lot of the higher municipalities put in projects and because of the traffic, the throughput and the the necessity. Like if a road is shut down because it's unpassable. It gets enough points that it it's in the upper half. Um, and that's why uh what Caleb had mentioned during his speaking about, we're still waiting to find out about Providence Road. That's because we didn't make it for the local funding that was allocated from the state. We were actually submitted up to a state level board for competition against.
Everyone.
Everyone else didn't get anything and that's what's taking so long is because that's, you know, it happens after they figure out the the. The the two other mechanisms for awarding those funds, so. The wheel turns slow, but it does burn. Hopefully it turns in our favor. I ended up having to collect additional tornado damage and recovery information for Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission on disaster recovery. Miss Kayler and I drove around the township and looked at properties and they circled back. After we reported our findings, um and asked some more pointed questions about a couple of properties. Their big concern is they wanna make sure that. Either damage was cleaned up. And something new was built. Or at least it was cleaned up. They didn't want persistent storm damage uh in the county, it's a hazard. For the people that own the property as well as anybody who happened to get. Up into it, looking for a dry place or a place to crash down, so. Happy to say that all of our properties look to be cleaned up. I think there's one that they rebuilt, but it may have been a question as to who owned the property. Cause it was on Brookville Paramount near the road and it looks like it's really close to the Walter property, but I think it belongs to the adjacent property. At least that's the, that's the address that they had on it, so there was some confusion there, uh had to circle back and get some more information. And uh myself and I'm just gonna steal your thunder, you don't mind? Trustee Music, myself and uh Caleb. Attended the Dallas American Revolution Grave Marker Ceremony on uh April thirtieth and it was. As a veteran, anytime that I get to participate in something like that, it just makes me proud, makes me kinda. Happy that I made the choices that I made in my life, so. Very happy with that. And that is all that I have. Trustee Mears?
Okay, I helped with the Easter egg hunt and it was a great turnout and it was over. Been working with Karen with his zoning items, we had a uh a meeting with the land bank. Uh, was present but late to the demolishing of the archway at Pleasant Hill. Uh, and Ben was able to save two small pieces.
Yeah, there's a plaque that was on the bottom, there was a stone that was painted, it was engraved and then painted.
Yeah.
Save that, of course, two different parts of it and then one pillar. Sort of a pillar.
Yeah, so we're, we're not sure, but at least he was able to save that. Um, I think he did a really nice job cleaning it up and everything else. Stop and saw Mr. Hoops at the garage and the updates that they are doing. I also attended a webinar through OTA. Each department celebrated Ms. Kayler for Administrative Assistant Day. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
And also thank you to Cora Miller uh for all of the goodies for police officers and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Music?
All right. So I also attended the Easter egg hunt, which was unbelievable, unbelievable to have that many eggs picked up that quick. I thought it was kinda cruel to to make all the kids pick those up, but they they enjoyed it, okay. I attended the Dallas American Revolution, that was uh an awesome, awesome event as well. Uh, the Montgomery County Law Enforcement Memorial Association, I attended that last week. I discussed uh certain cemetery issues with Caleb and Karen, uh which I think we're working on still. Uh, the retreat trees were delivered. Two weeks ago, uh on on Friday, two weeks ago Friday, uh they were all delivered to Brookville Service Department. No one contacted me to say anything, except for Brookville Service. Like just kinda poking poking at us a little bit, so I wanted to to recognize them, they did deliver all of the retreat trees to all the Perry Township presidents, so. Thank you.
Delivered them Friday and planted them Saturday, yes.
Thank you to them uh for for doing that to for us. Apologize, this morning. I attended the NVRPC Miami Valley Regional Planning Broadband Forum um at Sinclair, so this was a four hour forum. It was like information drinking from a fire hose, so I tried to sit at lunch today. Go over it, it's it's important information, I think, for the residents to know that. That there is, you know, broadband internet access to the township. People have their complaints. Um, there's a ton of money coming, I think the uh. Well, let me just do this, so to focus on broadband, uh the importance of the the focus was on the importance of access to broadband before. A broadband being important as a utility, as water or electricity. Broadband should be as important as water or electric as a utility, that was the the focus there. Um, it's an issue uh in rural areas as much as it is in areas of high population and low income. Where the limited population in our area. Doesn't get us attention from big corporations or companies to come in and and focus their attention here, there's just not enough rooftops. So with that being said, the. Federal government has just recently, I think, announced yesterday, the day before, nearly fifty billion dollars um in infrastructure relief. That are directed towards broadband. It is assumed that Ohio will receive nearly a billion dollars of that. Uh, there is money going to be available, hopefully to the townships to help with broadband relief, uh something I thought I'm gonna stay on top of it. To try and figure out, I know the USDA is is a big part in distributing that money to rural America. So there's money there. Uh, the goal. Okay, so my goal was to educate myself on the subject, uh how can we try to leverage resources in the township to increase our coverage uh with better options? And how residents can help pay for or get devices if they are underserved. Uh, we need to gain access to the internet, we wanna make sure that our residents have those tools and know how to get those tools. So, some of those programs, um which I think was just announced yesterday, is the Broadband Affordable Connectivity Program. Uh, what this does, this gives a thirty dollar subsidy to families. Who are underserved. Maybe can't afford it, uh this will help pay for it and some of it, uh the internet providers, it has been negotiated. To make it fifteen dollars, essentially making it free to to certain folks who can can afford it. Uh, nearly forty percent of homes are are said going to be eligible, so if you. Know anyone who doesn't have access to internet or is having problems paying for it. They need to to look out for this, this act that's just been passed to to help them. Um, a couple of other things, uh I didn't know this, Care Source is a good source of, is a good program. If you're on Care Source, they have programs to help you pay for internet, um even get you devices that you need. DigitalInclusion.org was a website, they were represented there today, they had a list of free or low cost. Uh, providers, uh for those that qualify. Uh, and most importantly, the one that I got really excited about, um I got to talk to a representative from Dayton Metro Library. Asked him, you know, what kind of programs that they offer. They said that's where they shine, so if you have problems using a device, you can't use your smartphone, you don't know how to log onto the internet, you're not sure of the safety of it. Contact Dayton Metro Library, we have two locations within our geographical square, um New Lebanon, Brookfield, that that are there to help. They will hold classes, if you are homebound, they can come to your home and teach you at your home. So I thought that was a fantastic program. If you don't have a device in your homebound, they can also offer you an iPad and then teach you how to. and then teach you how to use it and then come back out to make sure that you're using it correctly. So it was a fantastic, that was a lot in a couple of minutes. Uh, it was four hours of information that there's good things coming to the township. To rural areas with broadband. It, it, it is going to be a utility, hopefully. And uh I'm going to try and figure out how we can get some of that money that's out there uh to help our residents out with grants or whatever. So.
So just so you know, when the first tranche of ARPA funds went out, the state of Ohio set aside money to overcome the broadband gap.
Correct.
State of Ohio, and we did post that on our social media. Because unfortunately, we can't get involved. The residents have to reach out for themselves. So that's one of the things that I, I would ask you to be careful of.
Sure.
Is make sure that when you're learning about these programs, there's not much so far that a municipality or township can do. But there is some and it's, it's starting to gain steam now that
It is.
They're getting towards the second tranche of ARPA funds. The federal government's doing more.
I don't even know that this was ARPA related. This was new.
No, I know. What I'm saying is that this was something that
They haven't hashed these details out yet. I think as far as how we're even going to get, or even how much the state's going to get.
The state leadership has said since COVID that there was a gap. So when the state got ARPA funds, they cordoned some of it off and made it available for broadband for people to get grants, direct grants to be able to get internet and training and stuff like that. So this is just a continuation of that snowball down the mountainside. That's all.
Yep. There is a, and I have a list with me from the, from that of all the, all of the grants that were available. None of them right now can we apply for at all. So uh, with that being said, the state, state doesn't even know how much money they're going to get yet. Like it, it hasn't been allocated. So
Right.
Once it's allocated, I'm good. That's what my, my goal is to stay on top of it to see is if there's anything we can do, I want us doing it. So.
Excellent. All right, um, old business. Do we have any old business? On to new business. So last meeting, uh, Trustee Music offered up a recommendation on the increasing of the cemetery prices that we have currently. Basically updating those because we are a bit behind and it's hurting us on this. After reviewing the prices that he submitted, I, I have no problem with these increases. I think that they're timely. I think that they're necessary and they're not exorbitant. So with that said, I, I'd like to make a motion. If no one else has any other comments about that. Comments, discussion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposed uh new cemetery pricing list uh effective let's call it June first of twenty twenty-two. Make a resolution.
I made a motion. Do we need to make it a resolution? No, no. Okay, I just want to clarify. Not a problem.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
All right, and Trustee Mears gave us an estimate for updating the uh Township Employee Handbook, which I also found to be timely, necessary and not exorbitant. Which is three of the most important things for this township, right? We don't want to be paying unnecessarily. We don't want to be spending money to spend money. And this is definitely a need that we identified some time ago.
Yes.
And we're now able to do that. Um, I believe the, the current thinking is, is that during the second tranche of the ARPA funds, that this is something that we would undertake. But I wanted to see what the other trustees thought at this time and then once the funds are available, then we can make a motion to maybe that once we carved out the ARPA funds.
And that was in that one book, Lexful.
Yes, we do need to get new pricing.
Yes.
On it though.
Yes.
Well, we'll have to wait till our second draw comes, right?
We can get the price down.
No, just
Yeah.
Because that should be
When you're getting it in August, it'd go up by August.
Actually, those typically don't on stuff like that.
If you want to wait till July to do it.
I can do that.
Okay. Anyone else have any other new business? Anyone? All right. At this time, uh, visitors can comment or ask questions. We will limit it to two minutes per visitor. Is there anyone here that would like to speak?
I'll tell you later, Dean.
Okay. Did, uh, I think the latest, latest uh update on missing funds was that it had gone
Paid for anything. Um, they did send requesting update. Right now, they will not proceed until we know something back from social security, whether social security is going to reimburse any of the funds that were paid to them in error.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Birdleton?
Okay, I just had, I just have a, a, a comment I, and a compliment. I am very much appreciative of the way that is the direction that the township is going as far as getting on board with technology and transparency. Uh, that's very important to me. That's the compliment. Now, the question is regarding the, the trash payments, and I've always thought about this. Is there any way you can automate those, put them online? And so then when the broadband comes in, people can pay their trash online.
So much to hear.
I do know Rumpkey has applica, uh, apps that um they, they, they can use, but I don't know if that's even feasible.
They don't do our billing. We actually do our billing through I-Works.
Okay.
And out in Utah.
Right, and I-Works, there, there is that capability. And Oasis Systems is willing to work with us on that, the people that do our, our website. We just haven't gotten to the point yet where we could do that.
Okay.
So that's something that is on the list, on the list of stuff that we're going to be looking into to make that more efficient for people. But in the meantime, we do have a lovely uh
I know, it's gorgeous. Everything dry, because I was going to have to put up a clothesline and, you know, hang it up so the checks could
They dry out?
Yeah. And, and just one more uh thing, uh, because it's, it's summertime, the, the weather is finally starting to get real beautiful and I you triggered this uh when you were talking about, you know, the abatements and the grass cutting and everything like that. People, I don't know if there's anything a statement of law or, or what have you, an ordinance, grass clippings in the road, very dangerous to motorcycle riders.
There is, there is an ORC for grass clipping in the roadway.
Okay.
We have put a post on our social media about it and as we are driving around, we do give them a warning saying, hey, while you're mowing, please, will you finish up to go that time I receive a complaint or a call about it, we do address it as well. So yes, we are proactive on doing that.
Okay, great, thanks. I just, I used to work in a hospital and this time of year, a lot of
Nope, you're perfectly fine, ma'am. Yep.
That's your two minutes. Thank you. I did receive an update. The grand jury is, uh, we are looking at grand jury for next week. That will be happening. That was from
Okay, perfect, yeah, that's
Okay, anybody else want to speak? Anyone online that would like to speak? All right. All right, that said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone.